Okay, I'd like to call the City Council Meeting of December 21st, 2023 to order. Roll call, please.
Alderwoman Ames.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Currielli.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Sismarsky. Alderman Artwoods.
Here.
Alderman Artie Woods.
Here.
Mayor, please.
Here, I declare a quorum. Please stand and join a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first, I need a motion to approve the minutes of December 7th, 2023.
I'll make the motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments, questions, or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. That carries. Do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda? Okay, I have no written communicate this evening. Under Mayor's report, we have one item regarding special events. So, just so everybody knows, I'm gonna give you a quick of what was just discussed. So, our carnival that we had last year and past few years is no longer. And because of the weekends, we had this issue years ago. So, Janelle reached out and we did get three, and they were all different dates than the original. So, the committee went with Fantasy Amusements, and the festival will now be June 27th through the 30th. Okay? And we're gonna need a motion on all this stuff. We're also looking to change the budget of the bands. We were at 85,000. We're going to 120,000. We're gonna do a little experiment. And then, the other thing is, we talked about bringing in breweries to the fest, and Janelle's gonna send out an RFP, and the cost is gonna be $3,600. The VFW will also be involved in this if they wanna see how many we end up with. Am I missing anything, Janelle? If you're gonna get a come to the mic.
So, we covered the date change.
Right.
We covered the carnival choice. We covered the increased amount for entertainment at Prairie Fest, for musical entertainment to 120, and we covered the beer RFP at 3,600 per vendor.
Right, and the beer RFP is, so basically, we're not going to be selling beer there. And we'll see how many people we end up getting. The only question I didn't ask, what if we only get one person for RFP?
I think that's something we'll have to discuss.
We'll have to discuss. Okay. Alderman Jacob?
So, you had said the VFW would still be involved.
Well, no, no, they would be allowed to be a vendor.
Oh, okay, and sell beer?
And sell beer.
Oh, okay.
Right, so, basically, we talked about this years ago, going out, and the city no longer handled the beer. Go ahead, Alderman Catalano.
Would there be any discount passes for families with kids as far as the carnival rights?
So, this carnival, Janelle, you can expand on that, please.
Fantasy is actually one of the few carnivals that still provides a pre-purchased unlimited wristband at a discount. Most carnivals are no longer allowing or selling mega-passes, but they are doing unlimited wristbands with pre-purchased dates, so whether it's raining or sunshine, you've purchased this ticket at a reduced cost.
And just follow up.
Go ahead, follow up.
And we're still gonna have Thursday night residents as far as food vouchers?
These are the only changes.
Oh, okay.
Everything else remains the same.
Okay.
Thank you.
Correct.
All right, Alderman Sismarsky is here, and Mike, just to bring you up to speed, so, some changes to the festival, Prairie Fest. We lost our carnival. We're getting a... They, they're not gonna do it this year, so we had to change the date, and it's gonna be Fantasy Amusements, June 27th through the 30th. We're looking to change the budget on the bands from 85,000 to 120, and we're going out to RFP for the beer sales. That includes the VFW also be allowed to...
Can I make one comment?
Go ahead, Alderman Sismarsky.
Can we venture out to find a, we know we have a local microbrew in the area that would, I talked to them, they'd like to have it.
We have, there's a couple that was mentioned that were locals, but it's gonna go out to RFP, and I think, what is it, 30 days, Mr. Bond? They were gonna ask you what... Yeah, they were mentioned.
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Bond. If we go out to RFP, it's what, 30 days or something?
Yeah, to give everybody an opportunity to be able to get their...
Okay. All right, so we have those three changes. We'll need a motion to move forward. Oh, we got another question. Sorry, Alderman Jacob.
Yeah, I know, and hearing about the meetings and some of the meetings, I know there was some concerns about how much money we were losing on it, and we're expanding, but we're gonna spend more money for the bands. Are we gonna bring in a bigger band or some, a bigger cover band to try attracting more people then, or?
So, that is what we're looking to do, especially on Friday night. Saturday nights are fireworks, but we're looking to bring in a bigger band on Friday and possibly Sunday. Honestly, we're gonna have to see, we're gonna give her the budget, she's gonna go to the, our people and see who's available for those dates, because now everything's changed, right? Any other questions, follow up?
I guess you had said we're gonna try something different. Is that what we're gonna try, bring, seeing what the bigger band?
Right, that's...
Okay.
And we're gonna do the breweries or separate beer vendors. We might still have a tent, we haven't discussed all that, where we would check IDs and give wristbands. It would be a smaller tents, possible. Mr. Murmish?
Is Finance Director Wilson still allowed to participate in wrestling?
Only if his life insurance is up to date. Okay, so, are there questions before I ask for a motion? Do I have a motion?
Do you have a motion?
Second.
Okay. Alderman Sismarsky, Alderman Artie Woods.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, you have a motion and a second. Let's do a roll call.
Alderman Sismarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames.
Yes.
Alderman Currielli.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sismar, Art Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Artie Woods.
Yes.
And that passes. Okay, next, City Manager's Report.
A couple items tonight. First, I'd like to recognize the Public Works Department for their continued success in attaining grant funding. Their most recent grant was from the Morden Arboretum, and they got $12,000 to help with our GIS mapping of all our trees in the city of Wooddale for our urban forestry management plan, which I know they've been talking about for a number of years, so that's great news. Thank you to Public Works. Then I had two other items. City Hall Holiday Hours, City Hall will observe holiday hours beginning Friday, December 22nd. Will be open from 8:30 till 12:30, and then will be closed on December 25th. And again, the following week for the New Year's holiday, will be open from 12:30, I mean, from 8:30 to 12:30 on the 29th, and then closed on Monday, January 1st. And I know I mentioned this before, but for residents interested in holiday light recycling, we do encourage you to come in and recycle those older, broken lights, and they can be dropped off at our Public Works facility from now until January 29th. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, Consent Agenda. We have five items, so if we have no objections, I need a motion to approve...
Make a motion to approve the five items?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Alderman Sismarsky with a second. Roll call. There was no objections, correct? Okay.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Sismarsky.
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames.
Yes.
Alder, Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Currielli.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Artwoods.
Yes.
Alderman Artie Woods.
Yes.
And that passes. Next, we need a motion to approve the items. Item number one, a resolution approving an agreement between the city of Wooddale and Bear Construction for the Public Works Fitness and IT Areas Buildout in an amount not to exceed 47,000. Item number two, a resolution accepting the fiscal year 2023 annual audit report from Sickage LLP. Item number three, a resolution authorizing the city of Wooddale to enter into an insurance agreement with the Illinois Public Risk Fund for workers' compensation insurance in an amount of $337,124. Item number four, a resolution authorizing the city of Wooddale to enter into an insurance agreement with Travelers Insurance for City General Liability, Employee Benefit Liability, Auto Insurance, City Property and Crime Insurance in the amount of $264,864. Item number five, a resolution authorizing the city of Wooddale to enter into an insurance agreement with CFC Insurance for Cyber Insurance in the amount of $18,119. Do I have a motion?
Take that motion.
Motion and a second, roll call.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Currielli.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sismarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Artwoods.
Yes.
Alderman Artie Woods.
Yes.
And that passes. Next, committee chairman reports, Alderman Catalano.
Yes, I have one, Mayor.
I have one, Mayor.
Go ahead.
A resolution authorizing the approval and the execution of an agreement for the purchase and the sale of real estate located at 120 East Commercial Street, Wooddale, DuPage County, Illinois. That is my motion.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Mr. Bond, shouldn't we have the number there?
The purchase price for that is 275,000. If you recall, that was less than that authorized by the council. The property had been listed for 349,500. Staff was directed to discuss and negotiate the acquisition. Community Economic Development Director Springer twisted some arms and was able to save the city significant money in that price. It's for that parcel that is adjacent to the city-owned parcel.
So, the motion and a second or agree to the cost, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Alderman Jacob, go ahead.
Yeah, this is for Pat Bond. I noticed, I was doing a little legal review there, and it talked about property taxes paid in 2002.
Mr. Bond?
And shouldn't that be 2022?
Yeah, the agreement has 2022 taxes. There was, you'd gotten a draft of it, awaiting finalization of it, so...
Okay.
We're good, okay?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Artie Woods.
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano, I mean, I'm sorry, Alderman Currielli.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sismarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Artwoods.
Yes.
And that passes.
That's the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Health, Safety and Judiciary and Ethics, Alderman Currielli.
One report, Mayor, a resolution authorizing the city of Wooddale to enter into a five-year agreement to lease ALPR cameras and supporting software from Flock Safety in an amount not to exceed $305,000. That is my motion.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions? Alderman Messina?
Yeah, I wanted to be recognized to amend the motion. Can I do so?
Good, what are you asking?
Well, no, so, obviously, I wasn't here last week, and so, you know, a couple things I've heard. From what I understand, I think there was consensus that we want cameras, and doing some more digging, the amount for, I guess the range of cameras went from as low as eight, maybe, that was you, the mayor, to as high as 30, right? I guess I'm disappointed based on everything that's happening. I mean, I'm reading, I'm reading the results of these cameras, and I'm seeing 36 gang members and terrorists stopped, three sex offenders, 17 stolen plates, 19 stolen vehicles, three warrants. So, my, I guess my first concern was the fact that it didn't even pass whether there was one extra camera or 30. So, I'm a little frustrated there. They're $3,000 each. So, when you go to your constituents and you tell them that, right, the Big Brother theory, the conspiracy theory, I'm not gonna sugarcoat it anymore. It's bullshit. Sorry, it's bullshit. The data's removed after 30 days. Please, please, do your research. I promise you, we would be on the front page and every news station if we were using that information. This is about prevention. And so, these cameras give neighboring police departments the ability to give each other heads up when there is a potential threat that is coming, and it could save a life. Now, in my case, in some cases, I feel like unfortunately, but no one died in my, I don't know if somebody needs to die in order for us to get the picture, because as I go through these different scenarios, like, that's near and dear to my heart, and the fact of if there was an LPR in Bensonville that could have alerted DuPage County or Wooddale PD that this idiot was driving around and being chased all through Bensonville before it hit, went over Route 83, there could have been an opportunity to neutralize the risk. Would there have been stripes, like strips? Something could have been done before that car, and for good or bad, I say, I'm lucky, he went through my house. He could have probably killed multiple people on Route 83. So, they think about the minimal investment. I would like to see an amendment to the Flock Safety Agreement to add an additional 15 cameras, which includes the installation and the implementation cost and a not-to-exceed amount of $45,500. That would be my request.
There's a motion, we'd have to, the first motion would have to fail. Mr. Bond, go ahead.
If he's seeking to amend the motion...
Amend, right.
Yeah, then you would vote on whether or not the motion to amend would be discussed, and then if it fails, it goes back to the main motion. If it doesn't...
Okay, so, Alderman Currielli, you made the motion.
Could I just get some clarity? What was passed is no cameras?
It's, no, the additional...
No additional cameras, right?
No additional cameras.
Okay.
So, Alderman Currielli, did you wish to amend your motion?
No, I don't.
Alderman Artie Woods?
No.
Okay. Then you, we vote on this amendment. If it passes, it passes. If it doesn't pass, then go somewhere else.
Call it back.
No. They said no on the amendment.
So, there's two ways of amending. One's a friendly amendment, which is if the motioner and secondor agree. If the motioner and secondor disagree, then you would take a vote on whether or not the amended motion would be up for consideration. The amended motion, if the motion to amend fails, you're back to the main motion. If the motion to amend is passed, then you would, you would vote on that motion.
So, you can...
As long as, there's two ways. There's a friendly and...
I understood, oh, okay.
Okay, so, do we need a second?
Hold on, so, I don't, I don't understand that amended motion. What was it exactly?
So, I would like to amend the Flock Safety Agreement to add an additional 15 cameras, including, which would include...
Hold on, hold on. 15 cameras.
15 cameras.
The original 15, there was...
There was a whole range from what I understood. There was 30, there was 20, there was...
There was a recommendation.
There was a recommendation of 15, correct, chief? Yeah, chief, shake.
The net of it, that's my, that's my recommendation, is what the chief is requesting, 15, and an additional cost not to exceed 45,500.
We'll make that attorney review if it passes. Hold on, Mr. Bond, do we need a second on this amended motion?
Well, I thought...
I make the second, if you need a second.
But do we?
That's not, the motion to amend's not debatable. You just vote on the motion to amend, and if it's, if it fails, you're back on the main motion. If it passes, then you bring that for discussion. The two-step process, if it's not a friendly amendment.
Alderman Woods?
Since we've never done this before?
Right, I...
It was a thing?
I always thought it was the other way.
You've been here for a long time, you learn a lot of stuff, so...
Go ahead.
How does that come into effect? That would be, anytime somebody wanted to change the...
Mr. Bond?
Yeah, you've got two different ways of doing it. If it's a friendly emotion, a friendly motion, which is typically what we've had, the mover would usually agree, the secondor would agree. If the mover doesn't agree, the secondor doesn't agree, the main motion remains on the table. If there's a motion to amend, the motion to amend takes precedent, and it's not debatable. You decide if the motion to amend makes it. If not, then you're back to the main motion.
So, the amended...
Hold on. The way I understood it is, we have a motion and a second. If somebody tables, then it's a different story, and I was, the way I understood it was, we vote on this first one, and if that fails, then we look for another motion. But now you're telling me a friendly, unfriendly. Mr. Bond?
Yeah, you can do that as well. If you vote on the motion, if that motion fails, you can go back and renew the motion.
Yeah, but you're telling me, you're telling me this other motion takes precedent.
Right, 'cause you're trying to see if the other motion's gonna have votes to make it into, to defer discussion.
Interesting. Mr., yeah, I, I'm, Mr. Bond, hold on.
We'll get in on that. No, so, there's two different ways. There's a friendly motion, a motion to amend, and there's one that's not a friend, it's not called unfriendly, it's not a friendly motion. Though typically, what we have is, we have a motion, the mover agrees to it, and the secondor agrees to it, and you go to that, to that, the motion. The new motion that's on the table is the amended motion. That's not what you have here. The motioner and the secondor disagreed. So, you take a vote if the amended motion is going to, if it gets the votes, then the amended motion is on, late on the table.
Lot of firsts happening here. Alderman Messina, go ahead.
So, just for clarity, what we would be voting on, I know you said the amended would take precedence, would that be precedence of that decision is final, or that decision is what we now vote on again, like there's another vote?
It's a two-step process. That decision would be subject, then the, the resolution would be amended to include that language if it passes.
But then we need another motion.
Another vote, yeah, okay.
All right. Hold on. Well, let's see who's interested.
For clarity?
Go ahead, Alderman Jacob.
So, if we say yes here, then it, if we want...
Then there's another motion.
Okay, okay, perfect.
Wait, so, I'm so confused.
Alderman, Alderman Artie Woods?
Couldn't we amend the motions in perpetuity, then? Can I amend it to make it 1,000 cameras, and now I take precedent if I have a second? If I'm the most recent amended motion?
You see, so, we get, we get...
Which one are we gonna vote on first, if this is what we're discussing?
Mr. Bond?
Yeah, you vote on the motion to amend. If the motion to amend passes, that comes back on the table. You've got a resolution authorizing the same, well, the same thing, except now it's got that additional language in it.
So, this vote?
Mr. Alderman Catalano. Right now, you're just voting for this amend.
Okay.
All right, let's do a roll call, because this...
So, just for clarity, we're voting to amend or voting to vote on...
No, no, you're, right now, you're just voting to amend 15. That's all, just, you're just voting to amend, that's all.
To add 15.
Right.
Add the 15.
Okay. We have, let's do a roll call.
Can you read the amendment before we vote on it?
All right, Mr. Bond, who wants to read that?
I moved to amend the Flock Safety Agreement to add an additional 15 cameras, which includes the cost of installation and implementation, and an additional cost not to exceed 45,500.
Well, we can do that attorney review, we'll make sure we don't need the numbers, 'cause we don't all have the numbers in front of us.
3,000 each, right?
Well, there was other costs, it's not, yeah, there's, it's not that cut.
Okay, all right.
All right. Let's do a roll call.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Currielli.
No.
Alderman Sismarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Artwoods.
No.
And Alderman Artie Woods.
No.
Okay, that, that passes, so now we need to make the amended motion. We need a new motion?
So, now the motion is to, the motion is to pass a resolution authorizing the city of Wooddale to enter into a five-year agreement to lease ALPR cameras and supporting software from Flock Safety in an amount not to exceed $305,000, plus an additional 15 cameras at an amount not to exceed whatever that amount...
$45,500.
Again, subject to, so, do we need a motion for that?
No, that, well, yeah, that would be the motion.
That's the motion. So, do I have a motion or...
I make that motion.
Second.
Okay, so, what happens to the first motion? That's gone.
Well, for now.
The original motions.
The original motion is gone, this is the motion that's on the table. If that one fails, you can go back to the original motion.
Okay, so, Alderman Jacob and Alderwoman Ames.
So, the motion that's being voted on is the, the current resolution before you, plus the additional 15 cameras.
Subject to attorney approval.
Right. Okay, I got a comment. I think I said it last week, I mean, how many cameras is too many? I know we're missing a couple things, the chief, and I always like to go with the police department, right? But I'm seeing extra cameras in the center of town and whatnot. They said 15. I know the chief mentioned a couple by the highway. We have, really don't have anything in the industrial park. That could be another three to four, five cameras, and I know Oak Meadows Drive is missing eastbound. I mean, I could live with seven or eight, another 15, I think it's overkill, but that's just my opinion. Alderman Woods, go ahead.
I'd like to amend the motion. Can I do that? I want to amend the motion to go back to the original motion.
Second.
Well, that you can't do, 'cause you've got the motion. If this fails, it goes back to the original motion.
Oh, because we have an amended motion already, you can't go back to the original motion?
It will go back to the original.
Alderman Woods?
Okay, I'll amend the motion to add seven cameras instead of 15.
Second.
Good. Good. So that's another unfriendly, right? Okay. So you would vote on the amended motion. The amended motion is the original resolution plus seven cameras.
So do we have to officially take a vote, Pat?
Yeah, now, hold on, we have to take another vote. We have Art and Artie. Okay. So this is, this is only to add seven more cameras. Am I getting that right? I want to make sure.
The motioner does not agree. The seconder does not-
Again, this is another unfriendly motion.
Well, we're assuming that. We just got to make sure it's on record, correct?
Right, well, we, it's already on record. That, oh, yeah, they don't agree. Motioner and second don't agree. Correct. So, so it's clear, this is a motion to amend the amended motion, which was to add 15 cameras. This is to amend that down to- Seven.
Eight, 20 grand.
Okay. All right, let's do a roll call on this one.
Go ahead.
Alderman Jacob?
So if we say no on this, it goes back to the 15?
Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Go ahead, roll call.
Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Artie Woods?
Yes.
Alder, Alderwoman Ames?
No.
Alderman Catalano?
Hmm, no.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
No.
Alderman Messina?
Um, no.
Alderman Sismarsky?
No.
Okay, that fails. Now we go back to 15. Okay, so we had a motion and a second there already?
Round three.
Alderman Woods, go ahead.
I'll amend the motion to 10 cameras.
Second.
Okay, we're just, all right, we have motion and a second. There's a motioner and second are agree. I'm going to guess no, right?
No.
Okay. Artie Woods?
Why don't we just get 1,000 of them?
All right, so, hold on, wait, wait, guys. Hold on.
10 cameras.
All right, this for 10. I need a, let's do the roll call.
Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Artie Woods?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
No.
Alderman Catalano?
No.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
No.
Alderman Messina? Alderman Sismarsky?
No.
Okay. So now we got a motion and a second on 15 cameras. Do a roll call on that one.
15 cameras, okay. Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
No.
Alderman Jacob? I'm sorry. Alderman Sismarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Artwoods?
No.
And Alderman Artie Woods?
Okay, that passes. All right.
Is it Christmas yet?
New Year's.
Alderman Currielli, is that include your report?
Correct.
Include my report, mayor. Thank you. Public Works, Alderman Jacob?
One report this evening. A resolution approving change order number six to the agreement between the city of Wooddale and Resource Environmental Solutions LLC for the Tall Oaks Detention Basin retrofit project resulting in net reduction of $15,133. That would be my motion.
Second.
Any questions on this one? Alderman Messina?
Yeah, I already asked Alonis, but do you mind just, for the record-
Mr. Lang?
Explaining, you know, you and I talked about this, about the sidewalk.
Sure. So this was, arose from the conversation we had at committee not long ago, where it was elected to remove the sidewalk between Potter Street, I'm sorry, Catawba Avenue and Central Avenue. That results in a reduction of $50,133.
$15,000.
15, yes, 15.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Any questions for Public Works or, it's on our other business, right?
Let's go, what?
Other business for Public Works?
Not yet. We're not there yet. Go ahead, roll call.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Artie Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
That's the end of my report, mayor.
Next, Finance Administration, Alderwoman Ames?
I have one report, mayor. An ordinance regarding the Illinois Paid Leave for All Workers Act for the city of Wooddale. That is my motion.
Second.
My motion is second. Mr. Bond, did you want to say something? Yeah, just briefly. So for those of you who aren't familiar, the Paid Leave for All Workers Act was, it takes effect on January 1, 2024. It was intended to give workers one hour paid leave for every four hours, 40 hours worked, up to 40 hours a year. Can be used for any reason. You don't have to state, like, for sick leave, you had to say you, you had to, you were requesting it for that purpose, or if it was for some personal day. It does not require that. There is a provision in the, in the act, and I'm, I will tell you, we'll revisit this, because the legislature's going to be looking at it, that provides an exemption if the employer, one, it doesn't apply to collective bargaining unit members. If there's a union contract, this, that governs and not this. It also exempts schools and parks for reasons that are unknown. Municipalities are not exempted. There's probably going to be something that exempts them in the spring. But for right now, that, as long as you have a municipal ordinance that provides for the personnel policy, and you provide at least those number of days, and the city of Wooddale does provide for in excess of that minimum, this was for employers who did not provide that minimum leave, they're now mandated to provide that. As long as you provided, provide for that leave, the, you don't have to amend or change your policy. So the, the resolution that's before you and the policy amendment that's before you, it provides specifically that the city, it has in excess of that, that is provided for the paid benefits. This is an unfunded mandate. There is no money that says here you're going to get five extra days. I know, I think that was the intent initially. A lot of debate at the state and federal level as to how to interpret this from the Department of Labor and Department of the Illinois Human Services. But what you've got before you is an ordinance that identifies it. You didn't, you didn't ignore it, so it automatically gets lopped into the, into the policy. So that's the reason it's before you, and you can read it and say, well, wait a minute, this doesn't seem to do anything other than the city has adopted its current leave policy to, to apply, and it will cover those additional leave time, because it's already incorporated in that policy. Alderman Sismarsky?
Is this on top of their automatic vacation pay or time off or PTO?
There's no change.
Nothing at all?
No. Alderman Artie Woods?
From my understanding, I've seen a few communities opt out, but those are all home rule communities, from my understanding.
Mr. Bond?
We don't have that option.
That, we do not. That is correct. And there's some debate as to, I, my opinion is a home rule community can opt out under home rule authority. Non-home rule municipalities do not have any authority to do that. That's the difference. Follow up?
Follow up, yeah. So in the discussions I've seen in other communities, they're talking about situations where, what if all the police decide that day that they're going to take a mental health day? How do smaller communities like us handle that with this new obligation?
Mr. Bond? It wouldn't, wouldn't apply, because we're not making any change. We're using, we've essentially adopted this, the, the policy we've got. And if you look at the, the ordinance, section two, it says adopts current paid leave policy in accordance with the, with the handbook. So we already provide for that. We have a procedure for it, because under the Paid Leave for All Workers Act, you didn't have to give notice necessarily. You didn't have to, you know, so everybody could be off the day after Christmas, for example. And that's not workable and sustainable, and it would impact the operations of the city. That is not the case with what you're adopting this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Artie Woods, you were next.
Thank you. So why do we have to adopt it at all?
Mr. Bond? Because otherwise, the presumption is that you took no action and that they would automatically be entitled to those additional five days, because your policy was in existence prior to the effective date of the act. And so once the day, the act took effect, those would be considered five additional days that the employees would have available to them. Follow up?
It's like another motion before the motion.
Friendly.
Well, that's equally confusing.
Friendly and friendly.
Alderman Jacob?